So where do we go? Okay, Councilor McKinnon, how are you? Good to see you, sir. So Tracy, Councilor Twill, did he phone in to say that he's not coming?
I didn't hear him.
And Councilor Dron is sick and not phoning in. Okay, so we have council here. Okay, it's, as we always start off our meeting, we acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. So call to order, declarations of conflict of interest. See and none, that's great. Approval of the agenda, there's only one item, and this is Councilor McLeir's data, like his first big presentation, and it's the presentation of the City of Charlestown 2023-2024 Operational Budget and Associated Resolutions. Moved by Councilor Ramsay, seconded by Councilor Matarde. All those in favor, just raise your hand. Okay, eight zero. Okay, Councilor McLeir, do you wish to take the podium?
Good afternoon. Your worship, Mayor Philip Brown and members of City Council. As a newly elected official, I was appointed Chair of the Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee by His Worship in December 2022, and accepted the challenge to lead on bringing this important document to you today. With the assistance of the Finance Committee, members of council, key city staff, I am very pleased to stand before you to present the City of Charlestown's 2023-2024 Operating Budget. The City of Charlestown is a complex organization, providing service to residents, visitors, and businesses. I am confident that this balanced budget reflects council's continued commitment to a high level of core service delivery to residents and visitors alike. This is accomplished by using a sustainable lens, both today and into our collective future. The past year for the City of Charlestown has been an opportunity to evaluate our operations and deliver on best practices. In the summer of 2022, the former council approved two significant internal reviews to assess our current processes and structures. A financial services review from BDO addressed internal controls, and a governance review from KPMG addressed the organizational structure. The BDO report has provided us with a roadmap to ensure that as we are conducting the city's business in a fair and transparent manner. And I look forward to the implementation of the associated work plan that Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Committee will be reviewing in the first week of April. The KPMG report looks at how our organization is governed, which will be reviewed by our new CAO, Eleanor Mohammed, who will bring recommendations to the Human Resources Committee in the upcoming months. With these two reports, I believe that our city will be set for success moving forward. Last year's budget provided the resources to prepare a strategic plan. In June of 2022, Charlestown City Council unanimously adopted our strategic plan, 2022 to 2026. Input from residents, stakeholders, staff, and council served as the foundation for a multi-year plan. It is a roadmap for the city that outlines our shared vision and collective priorities. This plan will guide our decision-making as we work towards building a sustainable community for everyone. The city's new engagement platform, charlestownhall.ca, provides residents and stakeholders another way to submit feedback on our projects and initiatives. Launched last year, June 2022, the online platform strengthens our engagement efforts and gives the community an opportunity to have their say in issues that matters most to them. Early in 2023, the city conducted a pre-budget consultation process, and as we have prepared both the capital and operating budgets, we reviewed and incorporated many of the themes and suggestions. We heard how important transit is to our residents. That is why council is planning to expand the transit system in the northern part of the city and add more weekday frequency on routes, one, two, and three. This expansion also means more service on Saturday and Sunday. In her capital budget approved by council earlier this month, the funding for active transportation routes was increased by almost $500,000 for a total of $1.74 million. New routes are proposed for Towers Road, Grafton Street, Cedar Avenue, Liloq Drive, and on the East Royalty Road. A major priority in the capital budget is continuing the electrification of our transit system. In the past year, we obtained funding to purchase seven new electrical buses, which we will not receive until 2024, 2025. In the interim, our fleet requires updating, and we have funding for seven, for five reconditioned buses in our capital budget to continue to serve our increasing ridership. We would like to recognize the provincial and federal governments for their assistance with this significant project, as well as our partners, T3 Transit, the town of Cornwall, and the town of Stratford. Our capital budget has also enabled the first phase of the University Avenue Rehabilitation Program. We hope to implement the plan from Belvedere Avenue to Nassau Street this year and continue down to Houston Street in the upcoming years. We are also working with the province and the Water and Wastewater Utility on the commencement of the Eastern Gateway Project. This project has been a goal of the city for many years, and we are excited to get it started as it will do so much to improve the entrance to our city from the east and will provide better usage of the land for our residents in and around Water Street. Whether we were sitting in council or in our homes, Hurricane Fiona had a significant impact on all of us. Some residents were without power for upwards of two weeks. Trees were down, roads were blocked, businesses and schools were closed. It is important to remember, though, that the city continued to provide services. Our public works, parks and recreation, and environment and sustainability staff were out in full force, getting streets, roads, sidewalks cleared. Our recreation centers saw more than 15,000 visitors, while our utility department ensured safe drinking water services went uninterrupted throughout the city. Our emergency services, police and fire, were on full alert and responded to many calls over the two-week period. On behalf of the province, the city took on the residential tree program to remove uninsurable trees from residents' private property. I believe I speak for the mayor and for all members of council when I say how very proud we are of our city staff and volunteers as they work together to make sure that our services were still being delivered. Just as important are the lessons we have learned from Fiona. His worship has said on numerous occasions, there will be future Freonias. And it is incumbent upon us to make sure that our city is well-prepared for future events of this magnitude. To that end, this budget reflects council's commitment to make Charlestown a more resilient and sustainable community. Taking care of our natural environment and preparing for the future events was top of mind as we prepared this budget. We will be funding a climate action plan and a transit strategy, which will bring, which will become guiding documents as we plan for the future. A new tree replanting program will help begin to replace our tree canopy with more resilient species. We are looking to hire two full-time arborists, who will be committed to maintaining the canopy that is left in the city, supported by the capital budget, providing funding for the necessary equipment. The new tree reclamation project will use the fallen trees and give them new life. Last week, you would have heard an announcement on our flood program that residents may take advantage of to ensure that their homes are ready for future weather events. The successful switch program, which many residents have signed up for over the past two years, is drawn to a close. And we hope to redevelop this program with new partners and be in a position to reoffer it again. One of the issues identified by the KPMG report was that the City of Charlestown is lacking in the requisite staffing levels to ensure our core business is done in an efficient and timely manner. This year, we are looking at converting 13 existing positions to full-time. These are presently either acting, seasonal, or part-time. We are also creating nine new positions within the city corporation. Assistant managers will be hired for the Human Resources Department, Parks and Recreation Department. A new bylaw enforcement officer will be hired in the Planning Department to assist with the implementation of the short-term rental bylaw and other enforcement matters in planning. With these new and converted positions, we are hopeful that we will be able to serve our residents to a level they deserve. With the restructuring of the Economic Development Department, the city will be looking to complete an economic development strategy, which will define the city's core role in this area. It will establish the city's mandate, vision, and capacity, and will provide measurable gains in a strategy to access partner funding. The city has a grants bylaw which was passed in 2018. But given the number of new requests by many worthy organizations, it was decided to review the bylaw to make sure that it is compatible with the vision and goals of this council. An announcement on grant funding for all new requests will be made in the next couple of months. In 2023-2024, we are committed to continue to fund those organizations that have traditionally received resources. The Parks and Recreation Department had a very busy year with the completion of Phase One of the Simmons Sports Arena and Pool Replacement Project. This is a three-year project with much of the work being completed in the upcoming year. It is hoped that we will see occupancy of the pool in late summer 2024 and the arena in the fall of 2024. The Parks and Recreation budget has been increased to recognize the massive restoration efforts that will be required over the years to bring our parks back to where they were pre-Fiona, including funding for two parks maintenance staff. The Bell Alliance Center and East Link Center operating budgets continue to be funded by the city at 87% and 80%, respectively. Protective and emergency services remain integral to the overall well-being of our city. During the 2021 Community Survey, which will be completed again this year, police and fire both received high praise from our residents. Last summer, council converted two part-time police officers' positions to full-time. And the proposed budget will have two more officers added. The Fire Department continues to operate in an efficient manner, and we look forward to settling the contract for the permanent employees. Funded in this budget is an allocation to update the Fire Insurance Underwriter Survey, as well as a new Fire House Records Management System. The capital budget has reflected the need to make sure that civic buildings have generators to serve our residents in future emergency events. Your worship, with both the capital and operating budgets, we are investing in our future while ensuring we continue to be fiscally responsible. With the assistance of the provincial and federal governments and other partners, we passed a capital budget with projects totaling $110 million, with the city's share at $66 million. I am pleased to announce in this budget that there will be no increase in the city's tax rate. The utility rate was due to increase by 8.8%. But council felt that given the increase in costs in all other areas, it would be best to hold it to 5%. For the average household, this will mean an additional $35 per year. Your worship, I would be remiss if I did not recognize the work completed to get this budget to the public today. My sincere thanks to the Finance Committee, Councilor Julie McCabe, Councilor Bob Durong, His Worship, Mayor Brown. To all the department heads and administrative staff who provided such excellent input, thank you. To our interim CAO, Donna Vadel. To the new manager of finance, Betty French. And to Sue Fraser, our city director, thanks. By examining and investing in the delivery of core services, I am confident that we have set the table for a sustainable future. Your worship, it is with great pleasure that I move the 2023-2024 Operational Budget.
Yes, Councilor McLeir, you can have a seat there. Also, Councilor McLeir, I'd like to add Stephen Burke, who worked with Betty French on preparing these documents. I know that you had a lot of names to mention there, but Steve, thank you, and the team that put it together. And a big welcome to our new CAO, Eleanor Mohammed. So Donna, what's, you have some resolutions? Or are there any questions about the budget? We're all right to move right into the resolutions?
Your worship, moved by Councilor McLeir and seconded by Councilor McCabe, that the 2023-2024 City of Charlestown Operational Budget estimates, as presented by Councilor John McLeir, Chair of Finance Audit Tendering and Administrative Committee, be approved.
Question called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight zero, Councilors Twill and Duron absent.
Moved by Councilor McLeir and seconded by Councilor McCabe, that a municipal tax rate of $0.67 per $100 of assessment be levied against all non-commercial property in the City of Charlestown for the period of January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023, as per the provisions of the Real Property Tax Act. Save and accept. One, the non-commercial component of property, which is owned by a non-resident person or non-resident corporation, where the municipal tax rate shall be $1.33 per 100 of assessment. Two, the non-commercial component of hotels and motels, where the municipal tax rate shall be: A, $0.91 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; B, $1.57 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation; Number three, the non-commercial component of apartment buildings containing four or more units, where the municipal tax rate shall be: A, $0.91 per 100 of assessment, $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; B, $1.57 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation; And four, the non-commercial component of properties located in the Parkwood Estates and the Riverview Estates Mobile Homes Parks, where the municipal tax rate shall be: $0.42 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a resident person or a resident corporation; Or B, $1.8 per $100 of assessment, where the owner is a non-resident person or a non-resident corporation. For the purpose of this resolution, non-resident person and non-resident corporation applies to property owners as described in Section 24 of the Real Property Tax Act Regulation. Therefore, be it resolved that a municipal tax rate of $2.36 per $100 of assessment be levied against all commercial properties located in the City of Charlestown for the period of January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023, as per the provisions of the Real Property Tax Act. And be it further resolved that the City of Charlestown request the province of PEI to collect an additional $0.18 per $100 of assessment on all commercial properties within the Business Improvement Area, BIA, as per the attached map for the period of January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2023. The monies collected from this shall be transferred to Downtown Charlestown, Inc., for the purposes of marketing and enhancing the downtown core of the City of Charlestown.
Thank you, Donna. Question?
Question 12.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Eight zero, Councilors Duron and Twill absent.
Moved by Councilor McLeir and seconded by Councilor McCabe, that the Charlestown Water and Sewer Corporation Sewer and Combined Water and Sewer Rates and Fees, effective April 1, 2023, as detailed on the attached rate schedule, be approved.
Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight zero, Councilors Duron and Twill absent. Okay, is that it for the resolutions, Donna?
Yes, Your Worship.
Okay, well, I just want to start off. I know the deputy wants to follow, but this is Donna's last day here. And I thought it would be appropriate to recognize her in the public forum like we are today. The deputy will follow up. So Donna, on behalf of not only myself, but my lovely wife Lori Devine, who's told me many times, lucky you have Donna up there because the ship would be out there in the middle of the harbor, not knowing where we're going. But you put his back in the right direction. So Donna, on behalf of myself, my family, and the council, and all the staff and the residents of Charlestown, I want to sincerely thank you for your work that you've done up to March 31st. We'll definitely miss you. Deputy, do you want to? Deputy, do you want to?
Mercy, oh, thank you. Yeah, just to echo what His Worship has said, we will miss you. You have taken us through some pretty interesting times, and it hasn't gone unnoticed, and I feel we've all grown under your watchful eye, and I just wish you happy second retirement. And for your own, I hope you don't come back only so that you can enjoy your time, and anyways, so, thank you, wala'io.
Thank you very much.
And I think this deserves a standard ovation. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey? Deputy Mayor Yankoff, all those in favor? Thank you very much, have a great day, and welcome aboard Eleanor Mohammed.